Present is Mayor Keith Hedrick, Councilors Jill Russ, Jamal Beckford, Stephen Sheffield, Gwyneth Verdepo, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, Clerk Deborah Patrick, excused our Deputy Mayor Lawrence Scarish, and Counselor Rashad Carter.
Rashad Carter is here. Counselor Carter is here.
Okay. Well, we have a quorum, we're gonna continue. So, we will start out with 561, which is the Groton Utilities Financials. Director Field, come on in.
We apologize if the financials did not make it back at unpride. Going forward, we will make sure that those do get in for a little bit of information. So, we do apologize for that. They are at your stations currently.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So, we've turned up page two, which is the Electric Division income statement for the month ended January 31st, 2019. We outlined 25 of total revenue. The actuals came in at 4.9 million with a budget of 5.2 million for a negative variance of 254,000. That negative variance was driven truly because of the warmer January. The way that the budget is done for the electric is they kind of predict based on past patterns of liquid weather patterns, and sometimes you get it and sometimes you miss. So, if you were to compare your budget amount for revenues to the December budget, December had what, the budget just over 4.6 million, and in January, the budget was 5.2 million. So, $586,000 increase in just in the budget amount based on past weather patterns. So, with the warmer weather, the actual just came in under the budget. And if you look at actuals from December to January, January's actually up 216,000 versus December. So, it's not really weighing off, it's just based on the way that the budget's put together. It's not just as simple, take the number of the revenues, five by 12, and it's the same every 20 years, fluctuates. Go to line 41, the total operating expenses came in at just over 4.6 million with a budget of 4.5 million, so an $86,000 variance from the actual versus the budget. That is truly due from less bonded and nonbonded capital projects being done and more O and M and regular operations and maintenance work. Which brings us down to line 52, the net income from operations came in at 221,000. The firm income with the budget amount was anticipated at 654, again driven by a reduction in the revenues. We go to page three, which brings us to the year-to-date, just to kind of give a recap as to where we're at. Line 25, again, total revenue, the actual's just over 33 million with a budget at 32.5 million, so 694,000 versus the year.
I'm sorry, which line was that?
Line 25, from page three. And then, the operating expenditures on line 41, budgeted just about 30 million, and to date, they're at 30.8 million, so 800,000 above budget. Again, the last few months, a lot of the focus was on regular operating and maintenance costs of most of the projects. Then that, on line 52, the net income from operations, year-to-date, the actual is just under 2.5, and the budget's just over 2.5. So, net income from operations on line 52 is running right around with the budget number. So, that's just to summarize and not show up to the electric. We go to page seven of the report, which is the water division. On line 21, again, we'll start with just the month of January. Line 21, the total revenue was 756,000 with a budget of 820,000, so that did come in under budget. And if you look at the revenue classes, pretty much all of the classes kind of came in under budget there. So, if you look from the residential, the commercial, and the industrial. On line 30, the total operating expenses came in under budget, 808,000 versus the budget of 856,000. Then we get down to the net earnings before the DWS RF grant, which is line 44. The net earnings is actually a negative, a net loss of 50, just under 55,000, where this budget is actually built to have a net loss incorporated into it because of the cash position of the water. So, you see that it truly is coming in under budget, even though it is a negative. We flip to page eight, give us a year-to-date perspective as to where it is currently. Line 21, the total revenue, just under 6.2 million with a budget just over 6.2 million. So, it's running $40,000 short of budget. So, again, it's very close to being right on the budget amount for the year. The total operating expenses, currently just a little over 5 million with the budget coming in just under 6 million. So, the operating expenses, per usual with the water, is coming in underneath budget at almost $1 million, 965,000. With line 44, the net earnings before the DWS RF grant, the actual's 1,091 of actual earnings, whereas the budget amount is supposed to be a net loss of 340,370. So, they're actually running a million forward to a positive versus budget. So, that's the water. We go to page 12. We'll start the sewer. And as we've talked for many months, sewer runs with the water. So, when the water falls short, so does the sewer. So, you see the total revenue, the actual of 334,000 with the budget being 384,000, so just roughly 50,000 under budget or 13 percent. I think the water was about 8 and 1/4 percent under budget, so that's why you're supposed to be going together. The operating expenses on line 26, 227,000 of the actual, opposed to the budget of the 242, so operating is coming in under the budget for the month. And then, the net income from operations on line 37, 77,000 of net income, corresponding budget was about 112,000. Again, the shortfall from the actual to budget was the revenue piece of that coming in a little short. We go to page 13, which would be the year-to-date. The total revenue that we've talked about numerous times with the meters were coming in at just about 204 million for total revenue, with the budget being 2.9 or 511,000 shortfall versus budget. Total operating expenses, just under 1.5 with the budget amount being just about 1.7, so 213,000 under budget from the operating expense line, which is line 26. So, even with the shortfall in that revenue budget of that 511, the net income from the sewer on line 37 is still 703,000 to the good as far as the net income amount. The budget amount was proposed at just over a million, so it's 300,000 short of the budget amount, but it's still in the positive.
And you said that budget is seasonalized, right?
The water and sewer aren't as seasonalized as the electric one. The electric one truly does, based on, you know, the colder temperatures, and then vice versa in the July nights, the warmer temperatures where, you know, the ACs will be on it.
So, this is truly just divided by 12? Or there's, it's just not as drastic, is what you're saying?
Their curve would not as drastic. So, when we look at the water budget, December was 832,000 dollars was budget, and January was 820,000 dollars, so it was a difference of 12,000. But when we go to the electric, it was a $587,000 change in 12 months.
So, we're expecting in the summertime, people have their ACs going, people are probably filling up their pools, or is that how, it's heavier usage in the summer?
I'm pretty sure the way to, and again, not going through the full budget process last year, when these were built with a monthly budget, the way that I understand it's based on historical data and kind of taking that data from the curves in the months and breaking it down that way.
Okay.
So, it's truly from a trend. I know that is a little bit of a concern going in, in building the sewer budget this year, is we don't have that historical data that we do have with the electric and water. So, there's still gonna be a little bit of a guessing as to which month, you know, the total budget's the total budget, trying to break it out by a month and getting into the right bucket, instead of being a little bit more difficult.
Gotcha.
Mr. Sheffield.
Ron, I see we've made revenue on the residential side, but it seems like a...
Which one, the sewer?
Yeah, on sewer, page 13. But commercial, we have, it seems to be a significant shortfall. Will that be a concern of businesses just not, are they cutting back, or?
That's true. And you're looking at page 13, correct?
Yep, number 10.
Yep, so you'll see actually both in the commercial and in the industrial, and those are truly, and I'm correcting, if I'm wrong, but from the additional meters that pulled the sewer out was just truly for the, that they're not being charged, the water being used that's not going back into the sewer.
This is the impact of the deduct meters.
Gotcha.
Any questions on the budget? One thing that I wanted to remind the council and remind those in the audience is next Monday, the 4th of March, we will have a public information session on the sewer rates, and there'll be a full presentation and discussion on that, followed by a mayor and council meeting at 7:30.
So, the time will be?
6:30 is the public information session to discuss the way ahead with the sewer budget. Any questions on the, Counselor Carter?
Is that, is that, is that gonna be an hour regardless if they're finished or not?
Well, yes. Well, I ask that question a different way.
Is that, is the public information, the thing, what's it called?
It's a public information session as opposed to a public hearing?
Yeah, so that starts at?
6:30.
So, is that going to continue if it's not finished, is that gonna continue at 7:30?
Oh, absolutely, it will continue.
Until it's done?
Until it's done, and then we will start council at 7:30 or after that's finished.
So, is there, is there a way to, I was gonna say, is there a way to push it forward to six, or?
Push what forward?
Public information session.
To six o'clock, six?
Not to limit, not to limit the cover, not?
Well, without, we have allotted an hour because that's all we needed last time.
Do you think that'll be enough? Okay, alright.
Well, based on, based on previous performances, one of the reasons that I'm putting it out now is to try to get more information out there so people will attend. We have also, we've also put it out on Facebook and on the website, and we'll put it out again, I'll put it out again on the city Facebook page, and then I'll put it out on my Facebook page and share it, so we can get as much exposure as possible to get people here. I'm not sure that totally answered your question. Okay. Anything else on Groton Utilities Financials? Okay, we will then go to 742, which is the Groton Utilities... Resolutions. Okay, the first one is AZ Corporation Heater Installation.
So, last year during very cold weather, ice would build up on the chain drives for the primary tanks, one through four, and final tanks, one and two. And it'd trip the limits, which would shut off the collectors. The operators hired AZ to install heaters under the covers for the collectors, and AZ sent two employees for around two weeks, and the workers had to run rigid conduits and install new power wire to the heater units. They installed a total of 12 units, eight for the primary tanks, one through four, and four for the final tanks, one and two. This year, no matter how cold it's been, we've had no problems. This work was done in the fall, and we received the bill and are processing it for approval at this point.
Was this an emergency?
It was not an emergency, it was just poor planning.
So, why are we finding out about it now versus when this happened? I guess is my question.
Because management received the bill a month, month and a half ago, and we went through and started processing it, and we weren't aware of the work until recently.
Okay.
So, we have, so this is more of a, I'm sorry.
Counselor Carter.
So, this is more of like a, like, so it's a bill, it's not, it's not work, the work's already been done?
The work was done in the fall.
And you're just, this is more like a formality that you have to do, and it has to get paid for, correct?
We need to pay the bill at this point.
Yeah, so you just asked.
One of the things that happened is the electric group used to have licensed electricians, and we're currently short a licensed electrician, so we're using the primary licensed electrician to supervise other building type of work. So, we have been utilizing AZ to fill in, to do duties that are normally done by internal electricians or licensed electricians that we don't have on staff. So, the utility created a work order, an open purchase order to be able to do such things, but it, as a practical matter, this was done on the ground level of operations at the PAF to fix a problem. This very well could have been done with internal labor had we had the licensed electrician. We didn't have the licensed electricians, and they didn't realize it was gonna cost us much.
Okay.
We didn't follow our purchasing policy on this. That's the bottom line. And we have taken some measures to ensure things like this don't happen again, but if somebody takes it on themselves and they order somebody to do something, and they're not following it, and then suddenly we get an invoice, that's what puts us in this situation. We are addressing the issue. And we are revising our purchasing policy, although we've been revising our purchasing policy for a while, but I'm trying to put pressure to get the purchasing policy fixed so that we'll follow the purchase, so that we have a revised purchasing policy. We still need to follow the purchasing policy that we have in place until we get the purchasing policy revised. So, it's the old one that we violated.
What does the current one say, current purchasing policy approximately?
Well, it goes back to whether or not it's budgeted or not, which is over $10,000 unbudgeted, it needs to come to the commission and council. And if it's over $50,000, whether it's budgeted or not, it's gotta go to the commission and council.
It's a different, different situation, even because the work's already been done, so.
Well, it would, I would be a little, I'd be a little easier with it if it had been emergent. I would still be frustrated, but this wasn't emergent, it is work that could have been done in-house, had it been properly communicated, and it wasn't. Like I said, I'm not gonna get into what's going on, but we are looking internal to fix this. Let me go here, Counselor Russ.
I guess I'm just gonna reiterate my frustration, that this is the second time we've gotten something after the fact to pay that should have come to us before. And I understand that it went over, or might not have been an item that you understood what the bottom line was, but I hope we can resolve this quickly.
Me too. Counselor Sheffield.
Well, following Counselor Russ, yes, we've established now a bad precedent, and now it seems that here we are again. And how many more times are we going to continue this process? So, yes, it needs to be addressed soon.
I can assure you that we're addressing it. We're actually getting more people involved in the budgeting process. Actually, the PAF is involved in doing their budget, just the entire team is involved. That way, they actually understand what is in their budget and in the numbers from the ground level up. The utilities, more people understand what's in their budgets, it actually allows things to flow much easier. We did, we did put electrician, did put the PAF in a bad place, and wanted to get it done, got it done, didn't realize that electrician labor is that costly. Running conduit actually was surprisingly expensive.
Well, hold on a minute, let me address that. Purchasing policy still doesn't allow you just pick up a phone and call somebody and say, hey, let's lay some, let's go lay some conduit. You still have to get quotes, you still have to get bids, those kind of things. So, there, there's more than one issue here, and we are, we're working on it, right? We are working on it?
We're definitely working on it.
Counselor Beck.
So, so, Ron, by, by working on it, you mean you're on board with, you know, revising, probably with some input, the policy revision, right? Revising the policy, and also retraining some of your folks, right, that are empowered, I'm assuming, to make these decisions?
We're trying to retrain at a lower level than previously.
Okay.
So, that more people are aware.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it's more of retraining than just holding people accountable.
Right, but it...
But I think, I think they know what the procedure is. I think they just don't, not sure if they're...
Agree. Well, but part of making people accountable is making sure they understand the procedure in the first place.
But I think they do.
Right.
You know, that's...
Right. Just trying to cover all bases, so.
I understand. I understand both your concerns, Counselor Russ.
Nothing more.
Counselor Debo, did you have your hand up?
I did not, thank you.
Counselor Sheffield, anything else on this?
No.
Okay, then I need a motion, uh, let's see, to move this to the mayor and council meeting of March 4th. So, move.
Seconded. Seconded.
With reservation.
I...
It's, the work's already, we have to pay for it.
It's done. It's done. We're paying, I get that we have to pay for it, but it is a moot point again, that we are...
It's not a discussion, you know?
We are, yeah. I 100% agree that they deserve to be paid for work.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those extension, motion carries. Next one is RH White, Water Treatment Plant Project Change Order.
So, in your package, you should have an example resolution, and then also an approval letter from the State Department of Health. That letter includes 10 line items. So, what we're trying to do is we bring packages forth, I'm trying to make sure you guys have a backup if those will be real...
Thank you.
I am feeling this may have been a double-sided.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've got...
I got one, two, and 10.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was double-sided.
I appreciate the...
So, out of the list of 10 items, the items go from, you know, the first one, you see item at 14,000, to on the second page that you apparently don't have, there's a credit of 22,000 for changes in flooring in the electrical room, to a credit of 1,800 for elimination of leak detection requirements in the DAF building and the underslap, to a couple of other items. But it has been fully vetted by the DPH, and we're moving forward to approve this change order on the RH White contract.
Send this to me electronically, and I'll send it to the council.
Do you want me to just make it for copy?
Do you have, yeah, would you mind doing that? Yes, please.
Thank you.
That way the council can have it.
So, we have tried to modify the packages that we send over to the mayor's office, and they'll pull back on that.
So, now, is everything covered by the revolving fund, or?
Everything is covered in the, in the scope of the project, which means when the DPH approves it, they approve that the funding is coming out of the loan and out of the grant simultaneously because they're reimbursed in proportion. So, meets all criteria within the contingency available for the project.
So, that's a, that's a yes. I just wanna make sure.
So, I want you to be clear, you're answering a question, you're not answering the question he's asking. You're including everything in the large umbrella topic. You're interested in where are we in contingency?
Right.
That's the question.
So, at this point, contingency, remaining contingency as a percent of remaining construction is 6.9 percent. That was a document that we saw.
Yep. How much did you say, 6.9?
6.9 percent.
See, they included the entire thing, too. What council's interested in is there's money set aside for the project, $54 million. Of that, there was a certain amount that was set for contingency. At one point, we were, what the council's interested in is how much contingency have we spent compared to where we are on the, thank you, where we are on the project?
Thank you.
Am I close, counsel? Right? The council needs to know if they're, if they need to be nervous or not about where the spend is compared to the status of the project. So, if we're approximately 50% through the project, the last number that I looked at, we were at 61 or 62% spent on contingents. Is that, is there anything you can discern from that piece of paper?
We started with slightly over $4.7 million in contingency.
Okay.
Which was 10.8% of the total project. To date, the remaining contingency is $1.8 million, which is 4.2%.
But, well, sure.
Okay, 1.8 over 4.7, I'm giving you the number. There's 38% left.
Okay.
Okay, now, what does that mean?
But, and we're 61%.
We're 61, 60.617, so we're 62% spent on contingency.
That's pretty much, that's pretty good.
Which is what I said, we're about, we are 50% complete based on timeline. And we are currently on schedule, on track, because that's important if we start to run over.
Right.
Alright, Counselor Debo.
You just said that we were at 10.8% contingency, but isn't that, wasn't it originally approved to be 10.1%, and this resolution would make it 10.77?
Yeah, that was the total compared to the project.
This will come out of contingency.
Well, is this, is this resolution not requesting an increase?
No.
No, this resolution is authorizing a change order against the contingency.
Right.
That, that's like the bucket of money where it's gonna be paying for-
Right, correct. You talking about the contingency?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. Is everybody okay with where we are? All right, did you have anything else on this resolution? And are there any other questions on this resolution? Councilor Debo.
I just have, I guess, more of a comment, I think. I think sometimes, like, a resolution like this is presented very confusing. If we could just say, this is the total amount it was going to cost before, we now need to increase it this amount, half which will come from this fund and half which will come from this fund. This is what we're looking to do, that would have been a lot simpler than the way it was presented a little bit, um, because it made it kind of confusing.
Okay, Councilor Carter.
Even for the people that are listening, I mean, also, you know, but I agree with what you're saying.
Any other comments?
I don't know if you guys do this, but do you have, like, an, like, an SPI number or a CPI number? Like a-
Translate that.
Like a cost performance index number, something that tells you, like, where we are. You, you'd mentioned that we were fifty percent, we're at fifty percent according to schedule, but we're also sixty percent through the budget.
Well, we're-
Is that correct?
We're sixty-two, no, we're sixty-two percent through contingency.
Right, okay, okay.
I mean, I distinguish-
All right, you're right, you did say that.
I, I am drawing a differentiation between contingency and the rest of the project.
Right.
The rest of the project is on track. Contingency is the extra pot of money that we have for overages. So, we are sixty-two percent spent in the overages. Now, I met with R H White representatives and I expressed my concern about these things. And one of the, the challenges that I have is that in a construction project, one of the questions you ask yourself is, is this normal for the spend?
Right.
Right? Because if you did, if you just did a spin curve, where you take the total amount divided by the number of months-
Right.
You do, you're gonna have a straight line and you die.
That's not realistic, right?
It's not realistic. So my question is, do we expect these things in the beginning, in the middle, or at the end of a construction project? And they assured me that they do not anticipate any additional large expenditures that'll, that will come out and that contingency is there to cover. My follow-up question was, okay, so you don't expect any, but are you keeping your eyes out to pay attention to look for that upfront? Right, now, because that's one of the things, we, we kind of got blindsided and, and surprised by the PCBs, which ended up costing us two point one million, I think it was, right, somewhere on there?
Two point one, with only one point seven authorized to spend against the project.
Right. So, that's why I'm so concerned about where we are with contingency and where we are on the construction project.
Right, no, I just, I got it confused. You said sixty-two percent spent on contingency.
Yes, sir.
And we're on, and we're on track-
I'm sorry.
And we, we are on track with the project, right?
That's right, that's, that is correct, right? That's what you told me.
I was, even from a construction, the last third thing.
Okay, so that's the latest info. Councilor Russell.
Just for clarification, the one point eight million is left after this is spent, what we're currently looking at? Or prior to?
Yes, because this was, this change order was in-
Stop.
Yes.
Stop. She asked you two questions, it can't be yes to both of them.
Yes, one point eight, after or before?
After, but they put that change order in the estimate at sixty-nine thousand, not seventy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions on this resolution? May I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of four March?
So moved, seconded.
We have a motion and a, and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. The next one is the one hundred fifteen KW correction. One hundred fifteen kilovolt motorized operator disconnect switch at the Bonington substation.
So the electric department was planning to do this project next year as a non-bonded capital project, routine upgrade, and they had mice get into the switch gear this winter. They just recently discovered it and decided that they needed to move this project exponentially forward to get it approved. So, the resolution is to fund seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars to move forward with this project.
Any, any question? Any questions on this?
So, so what are we, what are we doing exactly? I, I understand, so mice are getting in, are we-
Have they always got them?
Yeah, are we having better enclosures or?
A, a lot of this gear is very old and need to be upgraded anyway.
Gotcha.
It's just, it, you know, they, they find their way in through the wires-
Right.
You know, through, you know, through almost any hole. Sometimes you can keep the mice out, sometimes you can't, you do even pay for exterminator services. So that, that was just bad luck.
Okay, so there, there's wear and tear incurred by the mice?
Yeah, the mice ate through some control wire.
Sure, okay, so then we're just gonna move up, replacing some of these units, right? Is that what it is?
Right, it's actually the, the control system that, that does this, uh, in the switches. It's using non-bonded capital is, is the way to do it. So, non-bonded capital used is actually cash on hand. And then, the, the project, when it's finished, gets capitalized.
Okay.
Councilor Shev?
Uh, I guess, how long, I guess, what's the warranty, I guess, for this part that we're putting in? How long is this supposed to be before it needs to be replaced again due to?
This, this will be depreciated on a one-year schedule. So the plan is that it will last at least twenty years.
Okay, any other questions? I need a motion to move this to the mayor, mayor and council meeting of four March?
So moved, seconded.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, I think that's it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Parks and Rec will go seven forty-three. Parks and Rec Director Hill. The first one is the park and recreation user fee.
So I bring to you tonight the recommendations from the Beach and Parks Committee, uh, with regards to our user fees. I know that the pages aren't numbered, so, one, two, three, page four, um, under special events. We've always had a special event parking, this came into place in two thousand and twelve, and we have off sale the second time. Um, the Beach and Parks Committee put out a special event parking fee, but we never increased it, we increased our gate rates last year. So, that's just an adjustment to raising it to forty dollars for a special event. The only special event it affects nowadays is fireworks night, which helps us keep control of the parking. How many people come in and out and how we can control people parking on the property in a safe and, um, safe manner for everybody. So that's the, there's one fee change there, and then the other fee change that they're recommending, recommending is under pavilion usage. We have had an, we had an influx of use in our pavilions, six of them at the park. We rent out on a daily, uh, for rental, for a time, we will always leave two open, but the, uh, the Beach and Parks Committee wanted to go to an hourly rate for renting, um, just because of the number of users. It used to be you could rent for a certain dollar amount for four hours and then, you know, if you wanted, so if you want four hours, you need six, you'd actually get charged for eight, so they kind of looked at that and thought they'd, um, do it, recommend an hourly rate, just like we have with the diversity houses, an hourly rate. So, this is the dollar, the dollar amounts that we came up with for the larger pavilions versus the smaller ones, where it'd be twenty-five dollars an hour to rent a large pavilion for a resident and fifteen for a non-resident, I mean, sorry, for a smaller, smaller pavilion. And then it kind of increased as it, as it has in the past for residents and non-resident businesses and outer, outer city businesses. So those are the recommendations for the pavilions, plus, and then they, we always have a non, we have a nonprofit rate for the diversity house, but we never had one for pavilions, so they added that. And those are the only additions to the user fees.
Councilor Russell.
Um, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but I'm gonna throw this out there. At some point, we talked about, Avery Point uses our baseball fields for no fee, which is fine. But we had talked about asking them potentially to help with, um, something that needed maintenance, and I don't even, was it the snack shack or it was something that was down there?
The press box.
The press box, that's what it was.
We haven't gotten to the point of, uh, where we actually have a drawing or a plan. They have done in the past through their baseball foundation, helped us with field, we put irrigation on that field about eight, uh, six years ago, and they helped with that and the sodding, so they have, they're in the loop. Uh, we have to catch up to new athletic director because they have had a change in that position down there, and I have talked to Mike about that, so as soon as we get some plans in place and ideas of what we want to put on that press box, that will definitely be discussed with them.
Thank you.
Some financial help.
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up was the late fees. The, um, six to eight o'clock, the halftime, half-price fees. That has been something that I've heard a lot of people in disagreement with, and I just wanted to see how it went last year. Did it affect a lot of people? I know it, it was just something I heard a lot.
Right. Doing, the research we did, because this came up at Beach and Parks Committee too. The research that we did, it, it actually, we feel that they felt that, uh, we sold out of beach passes. We buy twenty-five hundred beach passes for the season. I can't, I don't remember the exact breakdown between city and non-city. And we, we ran out and our thought, and the thought of the committee was that, because people were more up to buy the beach passes, so they can get in whenever they wanted to and you're not gonna have to worry about that gate rate. We, our department heard pushback from one person, one taxpayer. So, also discussed that the, when we looked at those regulations of the beach, we are gonna do a survey this year, because there were some other things, like military discounts and, um, the, you know, how it was affecting people, um, after six o'clock. We are gonna do a survey, a random survey through the gate, you know, personnel will give it out to people as they come in and they can drop it off either here, at the office, at the park, at the beach. We may even work with, around services, see if they can drop it off at the concession stand, so that we can get some information and feedback. It'll be a simple, you know, half-page survey, so people, and that's what the recommendation of the Beach and Parks Committee were, to see if, if, you know, this will be our third, third season, I believe, with the open, the gate open longer. So we're just gonna try to get some feedback and, and see what people think via a survey.
If you're doing a survey, would you be interested in adding to that survey on other things about the beach in ways that people might?
Potentially, yeah. Just kind of, you know, people come to the beach and they're in beach attire and-
Yeah, they don't want to take a pic, yeah.
Something, and so we're trying to think of something quick and simple, they can just circle answers to and drop it off and stuff, so, but, we can look at that too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this? I need a motion, Councilor Debo.
I just wanted to comment, um, I am not a huge fan of adding more restrictions or making it harder for people to go to the beach. I know that a, a lot of people that I know that live in, um, some other towns and cities with beaches that are exorbitantly expensive are, they don't get to go and they're really put out by the extensive fees. So, while I don't necessarily think anything is outrageous, um, I just hate to see it keep going up so much for a special event, thirty-two to forty dollars a car, that's kind of a big jump.
Can I?
Councilor Russell.
I think that's addressed in, and what Mary said was that, or Director Hill, sorry, was that, um, that has pushed people to buy beach passes, and a beach pass is actually cheaper than going to one special event. I mean, I think our beach passes are very inexpensive.
That's true.
Councilor Carter.
And, and, and I also think that, um, if we look at our, our fees as far as, like, parks and recreation and the, uh, the programs that we have with Parks and Rec, I think that, that they've maintained a, they're low, they're lower than a lot of other towns and cities, and I think that almost a draw on from somewhere, you know? So, I, I think that Mary does a good job of kind of having a nice even shift, you know? To, you know, her programs that she has in Parks and Rec, so, gotta get it from somewhere, you know? People are gonna go to the beach.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion for, to move the mayor and council meeting of four March?
So moved, seconded.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, the next one, uh, seven forty-four, Eastern Point Beach Rules and Regulations?
So, the recommendations from the Beach and Parks Committee on rules and regulations, um, the first change is on page two. We had it, that the permit had to be adhered to the diner side of the vehicle on the inside windshield, but we didn't really say where. So, the last couple of years, we've had quite a few up, up top, where a lot of the newer cars have like a shaded area for sun glare, so you can't see it. So, we had, we just added language that where we would like it on the lower left-hand corner. So that was that first change. Replacement passes, we had ninety-four replacement passes last year. So, we, you know, we, we, they recommended that there be a, a little bit of a cost to get that changed, if you, um, you know, to replace your pass, so we can recoup some of that. Especially if we have to go buy new passes, because we buy them in bulk, so they're not expensive, but when you have to buy a hundred of them, they come very, they become a little more expensive because there's not as many. So, um, that recommendation is to have a, um, a five-dollar replacement fee for replacement. Lost ticket, lost beach passes have always required a full, to buy a new one in full. And that's because we don't know where that beach pass is. You know, somebody might pick it up, even though they have a license plate number on them, we get to at least a dozen, to a dozen and a half people who drive through with a beach pass that doesn't correlate with the license plate number. And that could be somebody who lost one on their way out of here, someone who bought one, you know, they bought one, you know, I, I buy one and then I give it to my daughter and she has a car and it's not the same. So, um, that's been in there, I mean, it's been, it hasn't been in writing over the last, you know, twen- ten, fifteen years, but it's been something that's been done, so we just thought we'd put the language in there so people would know.
What's the difference between a replacement pass and a new pass?
A replacement is like, okay, my car windshield breaks and I have, you know, I have to take, we ask them, you have to get it replaced. So we ask, bring any part of the sticker and just peel it off, bring it to new pieces, and we'll replace it for you. Because it's going on the same car, but, you know, there is a cost to that pass, because we, you know, yeah. So, just so there's, or, or, um, I bought, I bought a new car in July because I got, you know, got a good deal and I bought my pass in May, so I had that deal, so it's, little things like that. Yeah.
Councilor Russell.
How much do a hundred stickers cost?
Hundred stickers cost over two hundred and fifty dollars. When I get, I get twenty-five hundred for less than ten thou- ten, uh, less than a thousand, thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it, it gets significant, so, yeah. I love a hundred dollars in budget for beach passes.
Okay.
Uh, page three is again just adding where, uh, under parking number K, just adding that it's in the lower left-hand corner for people to go to the beach pass. So, um, under, on page four, rules and regulations, number five. I know the city ordinance isn't totally finished being, going through the process, but this is where we're gonna put it in the rules and regulations, so that this kind of all goes together next, uh, next Monday, hopefully with the ordinance being read for the second time and the language being in there regarding pets at the beach. The only language we did leave in there from the previous notion on number five was except, the exception of service dogs and the goose patrol dog, which are on the property at times. On page five, number twenty, um, this came about because there was a question regarding, um, during the process of rules and regulations, so a number of community did come and ask if kickboards and noodles could be used at the beach. So we did, reached out to the insurance company and their recommendation was to keep the language as is, but don't list anything that would encourage people to say, can I bring this, can I bring that? So we eliminated all the examples of flotation devices that are allowed. The only thing that is allowed is the post-garner approved flotation devices. And on page six, um, we had, um, a numerous, a couple occasions last year where people were running their vehicles in the parking lot, so they could charge their phone. And it, so, uh, the Beach and Parks Committee wanted to reference the idling regulation from the Connecticut Department of, you know, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and reference it in the rules and regulations, so that way, um, if there's cars idling for, then we had a car idling for forty minutes at the beach, so their phone could be charged, unlocked, windows down, so somebody could have cut into that car and drove it away or different things. So, the Beach and Parks Committee asked that that be added. So the Beach and Parks Committee asked that that be added, so we did that. Under special events is the forty dollars, the thirty dollars, thirty-two to forty. So the corrections are recommendations upgrades or the.
Any question? Counselor Rusk.
I'm struggling with the replacement pass, with a lost pass being a full price since you have their, their license number. You know it's the same vehicle. I'm okay with it being five dollars. I have a hard time with it being a whole, full price. I'm just, that's, that's my feedback.
For, since I got here, if you lose it, you, you have to pay for a new one. Because there's no, there's, nobody knows where that is.
Yeah, you could throw it out of the car somewhere else, that's what she's saying.
But once again, it has your license on it. I just.
I, we also have, like I said, a dozen to a half, a dozen and a half, so twelve to eighteen cars come in. When, when that requires us to put a sticker.
You can fudge and lose.
You know, we have to put, you know, somebody says I lost my pass and we have to put a note down at the gate and says, okay, this dark, you know. There's a lot of parameters to it. The same thing with people whose chest bounds, we have to put down that they're, they can't get in.
I, I get it, I'm just.
There's really no reason to lose your pass unless, is there, is there a reason why you lose your pass?
People may lose them, I don't know.
Well, when you forget.
If you walk out and you put it in your car and then you misplace it, I'm just.
No, well, it's stuck in the, on the, to go on the.
But you have to yourself put it on there, so people could buy it and walking.
Probably switch the wording. I don't know, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours of, I don't know.
Says the police officer. Talk about the.
What I'm saying is, because people can, like, like if, if you have two or three people saying, I lost my pass, I lost my pass. Meanwhile, my driver family has the same passes, just fudging numbers. You know, it's not easy to duplicate a, or to, a recent license plate.
Two years ago when they started to fade. They lost the, they just, something in that paint just passed the marker to just.
Might, you might want to go to like, in the.
But that could be a question on our survey too.
Like scanners or something, just you, you know, something like that, like a smartphone or something, you know. Whatever you scanned correlates to, you know, like movies or whatever, something like that.
Counselor Rusk.
Since, since we've gone down this road of discussion. So when someone comes in and the pass doesn't match their license plate, do they get turned away?
Yes.
Okay. Well, no, but I mean, because we're bringing that up as a point that
Sure.
The, you would need to pay full price for a replacement pass. Almost as if you want them to pay full price because it's a second car coming in. But if, if someone gets the pass and puts it on a car and it doesn't match, you're not going to let them in anyways. So again, then they're paying full price for two passes and they're not going to get the refund.
It may be on my car and I didn't pay for that. I found it in the parking lot here and I picked it up.
And you can change the number on it too.
But it's got the license plate number.
You can change the number on that, that's all.
You know, we don't catch them all all the time.
Sure, but if, well.
You can change the number on those things too, though. It's not that hard to change the license plate number.
If I purchase a pass and I misplace it, I just have a hard time spending that money again when my license plate number is on that pass. And if somebody puts it on their car, they're going to get rejected anyways. I'm just voicing my, my concern.
Counselor Depot.
To add on to that, sometimes when you get in a car accident, your windshield is completely obliterated and there's no way to get a little piece of it, or you don't get to see the car again because it's gone and crushed now, so.
That would be a replacement system, only five dollars.
Well, right, but you're saying they have to bring in a piece of the pass or the pass scraped off the windshield. So how would you know whether someone is getting a replacement pass for that or if they lost one? Seems like.
Well, replacements, people who've broken the windshield, I mean, we've never had anybody come in. But their car's been totaled and it's in a garage, if they bring a note to us and say it's in the garage, we interfere. They get a temporary pass that we can't write because we have a note from the garage that says, Jill Russ's car is going to be at Karnes from August sixteenth to August twenty-sixth. So we know for ten days she's going to be without her car, we give her a temporary pass and she's still getting the beach.
Okay, so if someone has extenuating circumstances, they definitely need to bring that up.
And that's in the rules and regulations. If you have, it is in.
If you lose your driver's license, you got to pay for it. You don't get free.
There is wording, temporary passes, temporary parking, permit is available free of charge for current parking pass. Permit holders whose vehicles have been shot for repairs. It says up to five days, we, we're lenient with that because, you know, some people, you know, we had recalls, two cars last year recalls with airbags. So they were out for a month, but they got the temporary pass. Even though they already bought a beach pass on their car, their car was in the garage, they didn't have access to it, so we gave them a temporary pass. And, and we do that as long as they come to see us before, like, you know, we won't do it on a Saturday morning because we're not here. But as long as they come to their office hours.
Any other discussion on this resolution? Okay, I need a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of four, March.
So move, second.
We have a motion of second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension of motion carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, the last thing is seven twenty-eight. Space needs discussion.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Evening.
This afternoon, we had some people left here in their, um, um, in their desk area. So who remember, prior to Christmas, we had a group meeting. Had a group meeting, in the first half of the meeting, we talked about space needs. We had BL Company here, who went and processed with you of the space needs through the city. Hopefully you had some time to think about it and look at, look at it or remind yourself about it. Because I'm here tonight to ask if there is one item that either can be focused in on or eliminated from the, from the three items that were there that happened that morning. And I'll recap those three items for you that was kind of left on there. One was to build new, one was to rent space, and one was to, for the auditorium. So I'm hoping to get some type of discussion tonight. And we only gave you, we gave you two papers, there was the N two summaries on there. One was for the square footage and the other one was the cost per square footage you look at. It was basically two fifty versus four fifty in the square foot scenario.
So one of.
What's your feeling on the, on the auditorium?
I was going to say, one of the things that, that I need counsel to discuss tonight is the use of the auditorium and whether or not the auditorium is on the table for use or is it off the table? Counselor Rusk.
In my opinion, I feel like the auditorium's off the table. I don't think that it's, one, I think it's used too much. I think we utilize it for a number of events. I think it's a great space and I think to renovate it would be too costly and inefficient. That's.
Okay, Counselor Becker.
I concur with Counselor Rusk. I mean, just the other day, we came in here and I saw some Girl Scouts in there, meeting. Sometimes I hear the Fife and Drum Corps, you know, we get a little concert as we walk in. I, I just think it's a, it's a nice space to have and for people in the community to utilize. I, I would not want to give up that space.
As it has been described in the pass, we don't have a community center, but our auditorium is a center of community. So Counselor Depot.
I was going to, to add to that, I was even thinking about this last time. The things that we use the auditorium for, like, I'm trying to think of the last event I was here for. You couldn't even fit a number of people into half the auditorium or, you know, we, they really did use the whole, I think it was a Christmas concert. They, they needed all that space. We had so many people in there. I mean, there were people standing, there weren't even, you know, enough chairs for everyone to sit because so many people wanted to come. So I don't really see that as a possibility either. We'd be sacrificing, I think, too much. And it feels like we're using it in an increasing amount. So it's not even like we're declining in use of the auditorium. It seems like we're finding ways to use it more, which I think we should be doing and I think we're doing a good job of that. So I wouldn't want to, you know, ruin that momentum of involving the community. I think it's good.
Counselor Shavill.
I'm, I'm with the rest of the case.
Counselor Carter.
I concur.
Okay, so the auditorium is off table. Does that answer your question?
That gives us a little more area to now talk about because now we've kind of narrowed down to two items on there. I just got to write them over here.
Can I just do a housekeeping, Adam?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk, or Counselor Carter, I talk about myself, Counselor Carter. I've been told in the past no one can hear you because you sit back, so just note.
My breath stings sometimes, so I try to.
Bring your mic closer to you.
I'll bring it on.
You can put that in your lap.
So, so why, why we're trying to get this discussion or narrow down, it is our budget time. And we're trying to figure out where we're going to have to put the money in what box for architecturals? Or are we going to go right out to rent, or is the commission here, the counselors feel that they're, want to go rent space? I think you see the prices for new first, for square footage. We need, we need about eight thousand, anywhere that the municipal department needs is between six. And that was at the low side to ten thousand square feet, so we had all balanced ourselves around the eight thousand square foot number.
What's it, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Counselor Rusk.
The eight thousand square foot number, is that including using the old credit union? Are we looking at utilizing that space?
Yes, and that, that's going to come up after, if we can get through this, yes.
Okay.
That, that credit union space is currently being, not used, but we'll get, we'll get to where, wherever we are with that at this time.
Okay.
Counselor Carter.
I know, you guys, we also looked at the, like the Z House and the, what's the other big house?
Tyler.
Tyler House, what about like the upstairs of like, what did you, maybe I'm just lapsing, I don't remember. What did we say about the upstairs of like the Z House?
So, so, yes, that was, that was brought up during the workshop on there. It was what we call a change of use. The amount of money that you're going to gain for the square footage down there is not well spent, he had told us. Due to the fact we're in a flood zone, we're going to, the parking issues in the wintertime are down there. It just add, it just kept adding to the complexity of the overall maintenance. Never mind the initial money that you'll put out there to first change, to change over the use. But the, the future needs money to keep maintaining.
We had talked about needing to make it disability compliant, American Disability Act compliant. So we would have to put in an elevator, wouldn't we have to raise the building?
There, there's all those possibilities out there. It's a historic area, so there's some, there's kind of some give and take. But at the end of the day, if you're still in a flood zone and you can't get to your office or people can't get to it because we're, we've got an extremely high weather event that's happening there, it becomes.
Problematic.
Counselor Rusk.
So in thinking about this, have we looked at what the cost would be to, actually, can we build on property here? Or can we build on property at the water treatment plant? Do we have enough space?
So we did not look at the water treatment plant as a use area. Right now, we, we got to the point of what we, what the space study, what, excuse me, space study needed and needs of the, of this building currently. And then the focus point is where the council and the mayor wanted us to direct ourselves for the, for the energy. To go over and study the water rocks is going to cost us a lot of money. To go over here and study here at City Hall will cost us some money.
So focus in one space or the other?
Yeah, on there, which then would determine. We just got to the point of, do we need space? Someone neutral needed to come in here, look at each department and say, if we truly, to you, to your council, to the mayor, do, do you need space here or can something be reconfigured to make, you know, departments work? And it came up that we were very negative.
But there's no reason why we couldn't build on this property, correct?
There is. I, I thought, I thought it had to do with some, like some swamp, like land or something like that.
Well, we have wetlands in the back, the, we have wetlands from the Birch Plain Creek that we would have to be sensitive to, but there are spaces available on city property where the footprint or we could put the footprint of the building. Counselor Depot.
I, I think it had been kind of tossed around maybe in casual conversation before that some of us would prefer to keep as much centralized here because this is where our government is. So I think, in my opinion, if it is feasible to build somewhere here, either connected or somewhere on this property would be ideal. Obviously, we aren't sure if it's possible yet, but I, I think that, in my opinion, that would be best, you know, to have everything located here. Because I think also, you know, we're not on board with moving utility operations off-site or anything like that. I don't think any of us want to decentralize more of, of the operations and that type of thing.
Well, I think that probably helps us in this, in this discussion.
Counselor Carter, you had, what was your question?
What, I didn't have a question.
No, you had a comment, though.
When?
Just a minute ago, you made a comment about how we could maybe find space.
Oh, but building up?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I did say that.
Okay. It's interesting that you said that.
So, so we, we have a proposal in, we'd like to get a proposal, we'd like to get council's buy into this. So we reached back out to BL and asked about going up, about just going up with ten thousand square feet. Not the entire building. And was that going to be feasible? And they discussed it in their structural group on there. And they said, as long as the, what's in the field is there. They felt very confident that going up in a, in a minimal area of ten thousand square feet, and I'm just using it because of the round numbers, would be maybe more cost-effective than building actual new square footage on our site. But they need to do that investigation. The investigation really entails itself is to take the plans that we currently have and prove that the structure is actually here underneath. It's, it's one thing to draw plans, another thing is as built out in the field, as we're hearing from different other organizations. And, and that is one of the areas that we, the staff is thinking that may be a good alternative. And so it was thirty-eight hundred dollars, not to exceed, it was twenty-eight hundred dollars if, if we have plans, which we do. If the plans match, it would be the twenty-eight hundred dollars. If they didn't, it would be another thousand dollars more. So it was thirty-eight hundred dollars maximum to evaluate that structure. Then they could draw us kind of a picture at that point to say, here's what we could do, here's what it would look like. If they felt that the investigation proved the structure was here, we could resupport ourselves on the second floor off the, off the existing roof and see where, see where we're at at that point.
Then they would provide us with a cost estimate.
Right, that would then get them to the square footage number.
Right, so we.
Go ahead, Counselor Becker.
We, we would have to provide, you know, an elevator, right? And we would have to, we'd have to have a stairway, et cetera, right? So that would also consume area on our, on this current floor, right? But we would capture enough to satisfy our needs in the, in the long term or in the short term or?
No, that, that was a ten-year lookout at that point, what we were looking at. Besides the needs that were immediately needed on there. And I'm just going to throw items, items out there too, okay? If, if we was to use, if they, if they put the addition kind of on this side over here, they would just go up the stairwell that already exists. Right, and they would make another landing right there, turn and make that stairway. So you don't lose that square footage. Would you maybe lose some square footage to an elevator? Yeah, but that's pretty minimal compared to where we're at. If we're truly going to start moving some of the boxes around, and I call all our department boxes on there. It may be more beneficial to us that we do something like that. There's, there's a, there's a couple of great spots out there. We just need to hear from the engineers before we go off and say, hey, I think we can do this. Because otherwise you'll get, you'll get real rosy eyes there and say, let's do that.
Right.
Well, another, another challenge that we have, that if. Well, another, another challenge that we have, that if we, if we go up, this will help resolve some of it, we are starting to experience some roof leaks. So-
On which side?
It's the roof. So, the bottom line is this. I'm gonna have to repair the roof at some point, we're doing some research, we're, we're doing some tweaking to see if we can do some short-term, some fixes that are gonna fix it. Lower cost, but if we have to replace the entire roof, you're talking about one point two million. Whereas if you build up, you're gonna be building up over the bad roof, and you'll have a new roof anyway, that'll all be part of the thing. Going up is not to fix to the roof, it, it is, there is an opportunity here that where there may be some cost savings as a result of that. Counselor Rusk, you had a comment.
Oh, would, do we have departments that we could put on the, on a second floor, that it wouldn't be disruptive? Like, I know a lot of departments interface with the public on a regular basis. I don't know, like, could finance be on the second, like, what, are there departments that makes sense?
So that would come out of the space study, that, the, the person, B L who had done the space study would then look at those boxes and say, this would be the best couple of boxes to put up there.
Okay.
As long as you have access, you could pretty much put anybody up there.
Okay.
Is my feeling. You're, you're giving everybody the opportunity to go upstairs, as long as there's some way of doing it, regardless of where your department is located. Highway's a separate piece outside, right?
Right.
So some people go up there to the engineering side of it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Becker.
I, I, I'm on board with exploring this option and seeing if it's feasible via the engineers, I think that's a good option.
Counselor Depot.
I, I was just gonna say, I didn't even cross my mind to build up instead of out, so. But I mean, if, if it, it would also be great if it helps us to solve another problem, or coincides with needing to solve another problem anyways. It would make sense to do it, and I think it'd be great.
Okay, Counselor Rusk, you had a question regarding the old credit.
Oh, I would go on to finish up at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I apologize.
So, so we'll, we'll focus ourselves, we all agree that we'll focus ourselves on the, on the study for, in, at the building itself. We may come back, don't disregard, we may come back to ask for some rental space for short term, because even, as I explained to the mayor and finance director of your house this, this afternoon, we start this now, doesn't sometimes happen as quickly as, you know, it takes a little bit to engineer a boat, or engineer a building.
Okay.
And then there's the difference of engineering and building, there's two, two components here, and there are some immediate needs from different departments right now that they're putting out space.
Counselor Carter.
So there is, and I just, for some reason, I just keep on remembering, and I don't know how the police chief stands on this, or the mayor stands on this, but I remember Deputy, Deputy Mayor Garrett said, said that when the neat building had, came available, remember the neat, the former state police building on Thane Street? When that came available, I remember he said that he wished that we could possibly, you know, look at that as like a police department type deal, type thing or whatever. Has that ever come up, and do we know as far as moving the police department over to that building? Because I know they still have sales there, it's still structured as a-
You're talking about eighteen Thanes?
Yes.
Eighteen Thane Street has been purchased by a private owner, they are currently demoing the bottom.
All they are.
And then they're gonna remodel that, or, they, at some point, when they decide what they're gonna do with it, they will fix it so that it meets that, that purpose. The city, I don't remember if you were on the council or not, the city was, it was offered to the city by the state-
I remember that.
For a nice sum of seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars or something like that, high sevens, right, close?
That was like, two years ago, right?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, and the city opted not-
I remember, I was, I was-
Okay, so you are here, okay.
And that's something referring to, I remember when he mentioned that, I just didn't know if that was something that we could evaluate, but since it's already been purchased and-
It's, it is part of the economic development plan for Thane Street.
Yep, okay.
And that's, there's, I'm very hopeful for that section. Counselor Rusk.
Thank you. The one thing that we had discussed prior about renting space is that we ask that it be in the city, so if we're looking to rent a space, if we could utilize some of the open spaces in the city first, that would be appreciated.
I think we're, I think we all very much understood that, and the philosophy behind that, yes.
Thank you.
So I'll now bring you up to update a, oh, I'm sorry. Because for this engineering study for going up, doesn't necessarily need to come back to council, but we do want to make sure we have consensus from the council to go ahead with that plan and the engineering.
Right, it's below the threshold, but for transparency, it's important to me that, that, one, you guys know what we're looking to do, and also to let the audience know, because depending on the price, we may need to bond. And therefore, we will need to then make sure that, that we inform the public and sell this to the public, so the public gets to the same place that you are, so that, that when we ask the freemen to come out and vote, that they vote in the affirmative. Counselor Rusk.
How much money do we still have left in our bond money? Approximately?
So one point four.
I don't remember, and it's around a million.
Okay.
And, and one of the things, we're, one of the reasons we haven't come back to you with projects yet is because we need to kind of figure out what we're gonna do with this to determine where we go, right? Because one of the things, one of the things we are sensitive to is the amount of funds that we have available and not wasted taxpayer funds. I know that you guys, the council is sensitive to that, and I am sensitive to that. Anything else that you guys wanted to?
I just, I wanna bring up the old credit union.
The old credit union.
I keep calling it that, somewhere we better rename it.
Lower level?
Swing space.
First of all, thank you for giving us a focal point, that really helps us determine where we want to move this budget to for this year. So the, the lower level occupied area currently, so what we've done is we have brought in fresh air. We had EMCOR or New England Council, and I don't know the name, come in and had brought in a ten-inch fresh air duct, invited into the system. So we now have fresh air going into the HVAC down there. We, we have, there was a molteler, I don't know if anybody's had a, been down there, there was a molteler station down there. We disconnected all the electrical, and the teller station is gone, so we have cleared up the room, except for the desk and a few furniture items that were down there. And we are currently, we currently have a bid from our IT department for about sixty-five hundred dollars, and that's to bring the network switch over from the server to the outside of the room, and then go in and cable the room inside. What that does is that any department now can go down there, because it's IP phones, your computer one's off the IP system, so you have, you have a phone, you have a computer. And there's a couple of items that we are working on that, like, badge access controls or panic buttons that need to be installed, depending on what department goes down there. So right now, and then we're gonna have, we've got David Bell, David Bell, gonna give us a price to relamp it, they went down and started to put lamps in the old fixtures, the four foot, two-by-four fixtures, the recess fixtures up there, and the tombstones were just breaking because they were so old. It's just, it, it's a maintenance moment, it's nothing that, you know, they left it that way, it's just old. And we'll get, we'll get the price in and get it relamped. So that then will get us to being able to occupy the building, occupy the space down there. And I think we're all trying to figure out who would be the first needs on there, because we're calling it swing space for us right now. Departments need to get out of their area so that they can clean out their area, so that we can do some of the work that we need to do in the, in the offices. It's not, it's not a secret by any means, but every time we pick up a piece of carpet, it's with asbestos under it, right? It's with the glue, the mastic, you know what we've done here, we've, when we pulled it up here, we actually had it grinded out so that we get out of the asbestos business, and that's what we're trying to do with all the areas. Then deferred maintenance inside City Hall for different departments, I think for a lot of departments, and now, and now's the time to do with this swing space to really be able to move somebody out and bring somebody in for two or three weeks. Paint it up, get the asbestos out of there, get new gloves or whatever we're gonna do in there, and let a department function as best as it can for the short term.
So one of the things that we are looking at, there's actually two different plans, and we do, we do not have, we have not finalized either of these. But one is, you move somebody down, you fix their space, you move them back, then you rinse and repeat to the next one. Another logic, another thought process is, you move somebody down, that's where they're gonna be, you fix their space, you move the next person into that space. So you do the leapfrog thing instead of back and forth. We, we have not, we, we have not worked through that yet, so we don't have anything to present to you guys, we have, we haven't-
We have worked on it, right now we're making the room ready, we got, we're making the room ready to be occupied by any department that's at City Hall currently.
I think that's, anything else, Carlton, do you have any?
We have to get any consensus on this, that's all we have.
Okay, are there, oh, the memo, you have a memo that is attached to summary sheet? And that gives you, one, this is for Sue, but there's also some items that Carlton talked about that we're gonna be addressing in the future for this. Any other questions or comments? And there's no action for this, so we don't need to move this to, to a future meeting, this is information only. Now, before we take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I was just saying, can we go to six ninety?
Oh, did I not?
No, we didn't, that was-
You are correct, I want to add six ninety, which is the city budget presentation, so you have this at your station?
Yeah.
So this is the monthly report that we've been preparing, that just shows you the budget amount and then expenditures through January of, January thirty-first for the general fund. Again, we'll try to get these into the packets ahead of time.
Any questions?
Well, we only have two percent left in legislative, are we, is it okay?
It is, that's the, I believe it was the CCM training that, I think Counselor Sheffield went to this year.
That was, yeah, that was that year, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's nineteen ninety.
You're right, it's in nineteen's budget, but you're right. One, if you look at, if you look at that-
Number?
The number, I mean, we spent two hundred and twenty of two hundred and twenty-five, I am increasing that this year. Yes, I did, I increased that this year, because with the new council, we may want to send more people to the CCM conference, and maybe some training. Yeah, I think so.
I don't think anyone on this council, other than Counselor Sheffield, has gone.
Right. So we will be encouraging these kinds of things, one of the things I'm trying to do is to, to get you exposed to some more information to make you get a stronger council. Counselor Rusk.
Boards and commissions, it, the budget is fifteen thousand dollars, we've only spent a hundred and eleven, what is that?
That's due to the timing, that's the actuary, isn't it?
Okay.
So the, our home, the actuary services, that just hasn't been dealt in time for yet.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the one time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I move for adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to second, I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, question carries.
Thank you, Carlton.
Thank you all, Carlton, thank you, thank you, Ron, thank you all for coming out tonight.